Just after seven o'clock, call its meeting of the Central York Board of Alderman and Board. Roll call please, Senator.
Alderman Wardman.
Here.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Magley.
Here.
Alderman Laura.
Here.
Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderman Lookin.
All right, we do have a forum this evening officially in this state take place. Please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would like to debate from the agenda just for a minute. In light of the attacks in Paris over the weekend and the horrific loss of life, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence and remember the victims of such brutal, brutal and... Thank you very much. Always a horrific event when something of national importance takes place in the world stage. Thank you for that. Is your packet, if you have any changes or amendments to that? Make a motion to approve consent agenda as written. Senator. I have a motion to second to approve consent agenda as written, although it favors that. All votes. Yes, in the event that our guests this evening have to get back on the road and head back to Kansas City or Park, otherwise, I want to ask the council's approval to amend the agenda a little bit, move the action items to right now. Do you have any objection to that? So, to finance permission permits and licensing, nothing scheduled, is that correct?
That's correct.
Legal, permitting tax and disclosure compliance procedure for financial obligations of the city of Central Missouri. This ordinance requires two readings.
Just the next two ordinances, and we are related to the refinancing of the rec center and the improvements and renovations at the municipal pool. We have with us today Todd Goffey of American Medical Corp., Piper Jopri, he's our financial advisor who helped put together this package and also was involved in the original financing of the rec center. And Tony Stegman from Gilmore and Bell, who is also involved in the original financing of the rec center, is a bond counsel who they, together, they put together this, and with help from their staff, put together this extensive packet of information primarily is designed so that the Industrial Development Authority, who met just prior to this meeting at six o'clock, can act as a conduit for this project. And before I start getting it fitting, telling you more than I understand, I'll leave it to Todd and Tony to explain why the, as you remember, we chose Central Bank of Boone County to have the best proposal for financing. And these are the documents that will finalize that financing part, with the only thing left to do on the 24th is the actual closing for this agreement. So, I'll leave it to Todd and Tony before I say something that they have to correct.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Thank you for consideration on moving this item up on the agenda. We'll certainly take you up on that offer, hit the road back to Kansas City. Tony's going north of Kansas City, I'm going south of Kansas City, but I guess we'll be close together before we make the break. The ordinance for you tonight is to approve a lease agreement, and as you know, we went out to the market and got four responses. And Central Bank was the preferred approach. And previously, back in 2008, we just simply issued certificates of participation and did a public offering of those securities. But in this instance, the Central Bank proposal as a direct placement was the best approach. And the reason it's a little bit different this time is that they're a state charter bank, and so that really precipitated doing something a little bit different than certificates. But the reason we decided to do that is to provide some cost savings to the city and ultimately helps with providing the best borrowing cost. So, Tony can address some legal documents and questions that you might have. But basically, the rate that the bank is providing is 3.69 percent. It's fixed over a 20-year period. And with that, it does provide savings on the 2008 certificates, generates about a net present value benefit of $150,000. So, between refunding the 2008 certificates, providing some savings, and then we're adding to this about $900,000 of new money to be put towards the pool improvements. So, it's really, you know, a very nice package, and we're grateful to have a good response out of a local bank to do this. One item that we, I didn't mention the first time through with the IDA, that I'll mention as part of my comments too, is that from a security standpoint, we have left, potentially left the pool out of the package. So, the security that you have in place now for the 2008 certificates being the community center, that will continue to be the secure, this interest that the bank will have with this new financing. So, we're not adding any more property to that. But with that, I'll pause. I think Matt mentioned earlier, based on your action tonight, we have a closing tentatively set up for the 24th of November. So, you know, next week, the proceeds would be available. And I know the city and your Park folks are excited to get moving forward with the project. And have a nice day come Memorial Day.
All right.
I just want to walk you through briefly the documents that you'll approve by approving the resolution, the second resolution on your agenda. Are we, we're kind of talking about both of them at the same time, it seems. So, the, it's an ordinance, I'm sorry. So, the ordinance that approves the lease purchase transaction. Okay. So, that ordinance approves all of the documents that are necessary in order to pay off the outstanding certificates of participation, as well as to establish a, essentially, a construction escrow for your improvement that you're making to the pool. And so, the documents that you'll approve, a base lease, which gives the Industrial Development Authority a long-term leasehold interest in the community center property, not the pool, as Todd just explained. So, in the community center property. And then, that lease will terminate upon your payoff of the obligations. And so, it'll terminate early, you know, when you pay this off in 20 years or earlier than that. You have a second document that's a lease purchase agreement. That document is where the Industrial Development Authority immediately leases the property right back to you in exchange for the lease payments that are in fact what get passed through to the bank to repay the obligation. And that lease is subject to annual appropriation. That's what prevents this from being debt that requires federal approval. So, technically, the Board of Alderman, every year, when you approve your budget, you have a legal right to walk away from that lease purchase agreement. If you do that, then you give up the community center for the remaining term of the base lease. So, you know, it's, everything is conscious, but technically, you do have the right to walk away from those payments. And that, again, is what keeps this from being debt for constitutional purposes. Then, you have a project escrow agreement, which is essentially your construction escrow. So, the new money part of this will be put into a special account held at Central Bank of Boone County, and the city will just submit disbursement request as you need it to pay engineering project costs and that sort of thing. And then, that money will get paid out. Until it's paid, Central Bank has a lien on that account. It's just like every construction escrow. There's a second escrow agreement called an escrow trust agreement. That agreement is the document pursuant to which the funds on the refunding part are going to be held by the original trustee, the 2008 trustee, because those funds can't technically be applied to prepay the 2008 certificates until March. So, by putting them into an irrevocable escrow, as far as the city's concerned, your obligation is over. And so, that's the purpose of that.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but by waiting until we pay that off in March of '16, we don't spend our one refunding...
Advance refunding.
Advance refunding.
Actually, no, you do.
Oh, we do, okay, we do.
You do.
Because we pay.
Uh-huh. It's just that under the 2008 documents, it is not prepayable until March of 2008.
Right. Okay, got it. So, this is our, but since this agreement is set up such that there's no penalty for paying ahead or anything like that, it really becomes a moot point anyway.
On your new financing, that's correct. Yeah, okay. So, those are the documents that get approved by this. You've got, you know, termination documents of the old transaction, but other than that, those are the documents that get approved by this resolution. And then, the other res, or this ordinance, the other document that is before you is the ordinance to approve a tax and disclosure compliance procedure. That's the first one that comes up on your agenda. And that document would relate to not just this obligation, but every other tax exempt obligation or bond issued certificates of participation that the city may have now or in the future outstanding. And it's intended to make sure that you're going to be in compliance with federal tax laws as well as federal securities laws relating to any of those types of obligations. So, it's something that is required to be approved now so that it can apply to this financing, but then again, like I said, it applies to everything else that falls under that umbrella.
I know that Alderman Lee asked me before the meeting, just the, and talked briefly about this, but by doing this, and the IDA did approve both of the resolutions, essentially, is very much the same, doing their part to agree to the lease, leaseback part. They would not be putting themselves in a position where they couldn't then act as an agent if we needed them to do something more akin to what we thought they were, well, thought, akin to what the IDA was originally putting forth to buy land or something like that, or do something to promote an industry to moving to town or some kind of business like that. This won't preclude them from doing that.
No, no.
Okay, this is on page 33 of your packet. Alderman Magley, would you introduce this one, please?
Bill number?
Twenty-seven eighty-two.
Move bill number twenty-seven eighty-two to be given its first reading by title only.
Sorry.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven eighty-two to be given its first reading by title only, although it favors that. All votes. Continue, please.
Bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving tax and disclosure compliance procedure for financial obligation of the city of Central Missouri. Move that bill number twenty-seven eighty-two be given its second reading by title only.
Okay.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven eighty-two to be given its second reading by title only, although it favors that. All votes. Continue, please.
Bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving tax and disclosure compliance procedure for financial obligation of the city of Central Missouri. Move that bill number twenty-seven eighty-two be adopted by roll call vote.
Sorry.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven eighty-two be adopted by a roll call vote, although it favors that. All votes. Roll call vote please, Senator.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Laura.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven eighty-two passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-eight thirty-five.
Twenty-eight thirty-five. Next is approving a lease purchase transaction to pay the cost of refunding an outstanding series of certificates of participation of the city of Central Missouri, and to pay the cost of renovating and improving the city municipal swimming pool, and authorizing and approving the extension of related documents enacted. This ordinance requires two readings. Any further discussion or questions?
The first ordinance, of course, was for the policy. This is for the actual lease and all the refinancing, et cetera, all those documents applying into this one ordinance.
Alderman Borman, would you introduce this one, please?
Yes, bill number please.
Twenty-seven eighty-three.
I move that bill number twenty-seven eighty-three be given its first reading by title only.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven eighty-three be given its first reading by title only, although it favors that. All votes. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving lease purchase transaction to pay cost of the refunding an outstanding series of certificates of participation of the city of Central Missouri, and to pay cost of renovating and improving the city public swimming pool, and authorizing and approving execution of related documents and actions. I move that bill number twenty-seven eighty-three be given its second reading by title only.
Sorry. I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven eighty-three be given its second reading by title only, although it favors that. All votes. Continue, please.
Bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving a lease purchase transaction to pay cost of refunding an outstanding series of certificates of participation of the city of Central Missouri, and to pay cost of renovating and improving the city public swimming pool, and authorizing and approving the execution of related documents and actions. I move that bill number twenty-seven eighty-three be adopted by a roll call vote.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven eighty-three be adopted by a roll call vote, although it favors that. All votes. Roll call vote please, Senator.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
Alderman Laura.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes. All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven eighty-three passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-eight thirty-six.
Twenty-eight thirty-six. Okay.
Would it be possible to have a brief break to let Heather finish signing some documents, so that Tony and Todd can get on their own?
Oh, I hate her.
We'll stay in recess for a few minutes. Number three, authorizing the mayor of Central Missouri to execute the amendment to the terms and conditions of electrical, of electric service agreement with Illinois Power Marketing of Collinsville, Illinois, formerly known as Amherst Energy Marketing, regarding the required standby letter of credit. This is an ordinance that requires two readings.
So, I handed out the most recent version of the letter of credit. There was a minor error on the date, and then there were some other provisions that one of the, the attorney working for the, I believe, the city of California, among others, and from Spiegel, Spiegel and Derma reviewed the agreement and asked for some slight changes to be made. We have had a secured interest through Illinois Power Marketing. Basically, if IPM were to disappear, they're the company that we bought electricity from. We would then have to go find somewhere else to buy our power. So, the letter of credit is to cover any losses that we would have going somewhere else to find the replacement power. Right now, with the market where it's at, that wouldn't be very difficult to replace it at or below the same cost that we're dealing at now. If we had to get, we had to spend more money, that's when the, this letter of credit would be called. This one would become effective on December 2nd and be good for a period of a year. Remember, our agreement with Illinois Power Marketing ends in May of 2017, so then we'd have to get another letter of credit to bridge that last gap until we have our new agreement with whomsoever that might be. Illinois Power Marketing is being purchased by Dynergy. It is important that we have this letter of credit because there are some minor uncertainties about how that purchase is going to go on. So, we hadn't had, this is a slightly different way, but it's a more secure way as opposed to the agreements that we had in place in the past. The amount of the letter of credit will be a half a million dollars. The cost of power, of course, is much more than that. We spent, that's, you know, maybe two and a half months of electricity. But that would only, again, that's to cover any additional costs to find power somewhere else, and that should easily be enough to cover. So, we're just asking the Board of Alderman to approve the content of the agreement and then authorize the mayor to sign this agreement with the letter of credit. We have to act tonight, or the other option would be somehow read. So, this, I believe, is the final version, but I'm not 100% sure. But the final version will essentially like this and will not be any less favorable to us. Bob Harbor, our consultant, is working with, I'm trying to remember, the attorney with Spiegel and Derma, and I can't remember her name. But they're working together to make sure that this agreement does not put any risk, does not put any additional risk, or covers any risk there might be for IPM not covering their obligations, which is a very small chance anyway. So, it's basically an insurance policy. It's not going to cost us anything. We just need you guys to approve the content so we can have that insurance in place.
All right. That is on page 148 of your packet. Alderman Laura, would you introduce this one, please?
Yes, bill number?
Twenty-seven eighty-four.
I move that bill number twenty-seven eighty-four be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven eighty-four be given its first reading by title only, although it favors that. All votes. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Central Missouri to execute an amendment to an electric service agreement with Illinois Power Marketing Company regarding the required standby letter of credit. I move that bill number twenty-seven eighty-four be given its second reading by title only.
Sorry, sir. I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven eighty-four be given its second reading by title only, although it favors that. All votes. Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Central Missouri to execute an amendment to an electric service agreement with Illinois Power Marketing Company regarding the required standby letter of credit. I move that bill number twenty-seven eighty-four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
I have a motion to second to bill number twenty-seven eighty-four be adopted by a roll call vote, although it favors that.
And Tim, this, I apologize, this is the final. So, this has been signed, but this version has been signed by, so this is the, there will be no changes to this.
Okay.
I apologize, sir.
Roll call vote please, Senator.
Alderman Laura.
Yes.
Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Lee.
Yes.
Alderman Magley.
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven eighty-four passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Twenty-eight thirty-seven.
All right. So, purchasing?
We received a bid a while back from Break Brothers to do some tub grinding, or grind up all the mulch and all the wood product and leaves and such that has been collected out of our, out of the, near the old, where the old landfill property is. They gave us a bid, we only, and it was substantially higher than we had in previous years. So, Phil went out and got a second bid, and then gave Break Brothers a second time to take a look at the pile, which had grown since they had first come through. And upon the second set of bids, the bid from Hanson Tree Service was substantially lower, and so we're recommending approval of Hanson Tree Service. They also have a machine that actually, if they bring the same machine they did last time, requires less work by our city staff, so it's, it is definitely the preferable one.
How much mulch do we have from the last time we did?
Um, I, you know, it's, it's good. Not, not much. I mean, it's, I guess it's, but I, you know, I have not, I mean, not seen the original I think it's about 20%, and it's been like two or three years since we had that done. I think it's been two years since the last time, Phil said the last time we had it ground. I don't, off the hand, that's the best answer I can give you, I can give you. We still need to grind this stuff, but, I mean, getting rid of the, I guess your question is how do we get rid of the stuff that we're making? Or, okay. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's going to be a problem. I don't think we, I think, I don't think we're having a problem getting rid of it, I think Phil likes to keep a little bit, just in case.
Has Hanson's grinder brushed before?
Yeah, yeah, it's been a few years.
Because that was Break Brothers, it must be the double grind all, and Hanson, I'm guessing, is the single pass through the grinder.
Yeah, but it's a different kind of machine. And that's why they can get it, they can get it done faster with, I guess, got a bigger, meaner machine. I think the end product is good, but Break takes a little bit longer because they have to double grind it. That's my understanding from Phil. We at Hanson do our yard waste in Fulton also, and they got a pretty, pretty nice setup. It's got tracks on it, so it's, has an ability to move to the pile a little better as opposed to having to be fed.
So, a motion would be in order?
I believe a motion would be let Hanson do it.
I have a motion to second to accept the bid from Hanson for the grinding, the brush, and for a total of $19,750, although it favors that. All votes. Continue, please.
We'll note that Boone County Resource Management is now billing us monthly as opposed to annually for inspections. Would you actually dodge it before? Every month isn't going to be that high, though.
Any questions, Alderman? Make a motion we approve paying the bills in the amount of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Sorry.
Have a motion second to accept the accounts payable over twelve fifty, the amount of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-seven cents, although the favor is a.
Aye.
Votes? Thank you. Comments from citizens? Open and close. And report from the tariff commerce?
Minutes from the November meeting, we came an email just a few minutes before the meeting, so if you, they'll probably be, they'll be in next month's packet. Or would you, would you like it in next month's packet, or you would like them included in the record in this month's packet? I assume you'd rather have that in next month.
That's fine. Sure would be easier to you.
Okay. How about I, I email them out to you guys and put them in this month's packet?
That'll work. Thank you.
Mayor, the police department through, the check is going to community for care. It's got a very nice check from the, uh, is that the DFW?
Oh, okay.
I can help, man. It's DFW. DFW.
Miracle Agent is right next door to Don's office. DFW's out across from his home and across from the.
We got a very nice check from the, uh.
Outstanding.
Thank you, but in the amount of two hundred and fifty bucks from, or some of that budget.
That's the DFW.
Well, that's what I said.
Yes, you did say that.
Left the record shift.
Left the record shift, yeah, certainly. We have to get, uh, just, I'll get that to Jimmy sometime tomorrow, but everyone's really good about, everyone's really good about helping, you know. That's very nice.
We did have a lot of, uh, people that helped take the flag down at seven o'clock on Wednesday morning in anticipation of the, um, highways.
Which we got.
Place we did get. All right. Moving down to number eight, old business.
Old business.
Granting permission to Duke Newstead to place monument to U.S. veterans on the southwest corner of the city square near, near Galvestine. I think the last page of your packet.
Yes.
The drawing.
Yes. That amazingly technical sketch that I put together essentially puts, uh, points to where the monument would be placed. Uh, it would allow for, I went out there with Jodeen. We took a look at it with, with, with Mark Mustang on Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
And, uh, anyway, we came out with that. Generally, obviously, that's bigger than the monument would be in terms of the space taken up, taken up, done, took up. But, uh, that is acceptable to the Newsteads. It will not block, um,
Access to the square.
It should not be a problem for the anchor fest, or the anchor driving contest, and it will still allow Mr. Newstead to complete his Eagle project and show his respect and give the entire community a chance to, uh, show additional respect for those people. Give that last full measure for the country.
Do we need a motion to accept that or approve that, or?
That's why I put it on the agenda so they can have an official action by the Board of Aldermen saying that they have new city property for that purpose.
Okay. Make a motion we approve, uh, describe location for the monument in the city square.
Second.
Have a motion second to accept the position for Duke Newstead's monument to U.S. veterans, although the favor is a.
Aye.
Votes? Who was, uh, the name of the?
Terry Castle. I, I sent him an email letting him know that we do that. I haven't heard anything back, but Terry Castle will take over as the.
Emergency management director?
Yes, yeah, yeah, exactly, from Boone County on December one. So if we would like to make that transition from Scott Olson to Terry Castle on December one, this would be the way to do it.
Okay. I would like to make the appointment of Terry Castle to the position of emergency management director of the city of Central. Uh, effective date start December first. Joe officially removed.
Yes.
So, um.
Second.
Have a motion second to accept the mayor's appointment of Terry Castle to the position of emergency management director, effective December first, although the favor is a.
Uh, I, C.A.S.S. I know.
C.A.S.S. I know. I had, I had it wrong, so.
Said it out loud, so we, you don't get it right.
Yes. Okay. Uh, it's your turn, man.
Uh, three quick things. Uh, the new code supplements are arrived. Uh, so if you have a code book, this time they sent, they just, they gave a whole pack, everything new from the table of contents to the end of the.
Whole new book?
Whole new book.
All right. Because it's, it's, they're, they're formatting. Okay.
Right, right. Yeah, general codes, Bot Sullivan, blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera. Their formatting's slightly different. So, uh, and I think we originally had forty books. I don't think, based on Lynn's records, several of those died.
Disappeared.
But if you have, and I know you, you guys in the police department, you've got a code, don't you?
I have two, three of mine, and I must admit, I can never crack them open there.
You, you probably should have one just for the record, so we'll get you, but.
Yeah. Ask.
Ask April, she'll agree.
Well, send it to April, that's something.
Well, April should get one also. But if you have a, a, well.
Hard copy.
Yes. And by the way, the, there's little, uh, the little notebooks, you put those in? I asked them for how much it would be to get a new one. They're somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred dollars.
What?
I.
Yeah, they're terrible high.
Yeah, it's, I, I'd have to look, I've got an email on it, but bring back the one you got. So, uh, uh, we received our twenty-first single-family dwelling permit today, so two-year total is the best first one.
Okay.
They're easily found records. Um, and we received today in the Dropbox a, a permit application from Mr. C.M. Delarosa for one-ten East Railroad, which allows him to reopen his permit. And I talked to Boone County, so we will proceed. He's got a permit open and remodeled his building, and Godspeed, and we hope he gets it done.
Is he, and he is, I don't know, to have inspections every?
At least every six months, he has to keep making progress. The James, messes last name up, actually worked on that building back in two thousand and four. Yeah, and, uh, so, um, he's familiar with the building, and, um.
I bet he's got a lot more to say now than he did back two thousand and four.
Did have an interesting story by going up in a bucket truck to look at the roof in two thousand and four.
You don't have, you have it out, it's on the ground.
It's in the area landfill somewhere, so, yeah. There's, yeah, so, uh, so we'll see.
Let me read them.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm done.
Okay. Barrett?
You don't. That's fantastic.
Barrett?
The city Christmas party that everyone should have received invitation to is, uh, December sixteenth from noon to. So you will be invited to come and come back to.
Good. Do you have a report?
Yeah, it's five dollars, please.
Do you have a, I guess, uh, count for how many people have attended the case of theft? Or how many rights to that?
Well, it's always one hundred and thirteen, but I haven't looked at it recently.
And it is up and running, so.
It is.
Okay.
And on a peripheral note, we're getting, the use of the, uh, online bill pays keeps growing.
Good. All right. Are there any asthma arises? Anyone? No, it was. Hey, I would like to, uh, wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, uh, next week. Enjoy your time with your family and friends and all that.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I think I can make a motion. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.